......................................................... Okay. I'm up. The Commissioner's Office reporting the financials from August 5th, Regulation 15-116. I approve pursuant to a motion approved on December 30th, '14 to allow me to execute in lack of a quorum of the Commissioners, or sessions canceled, regular financial updating and financially be approved. This is as authorized by ORC 305.30. This is simply a payment for a Board of DD to Industrial Surface Sealer Inc. for Kriak sealing, sorry, crack sealing.
Crack sealing.
Seal coating.
Yeah.
Seal coating and striping of the Board of DD. Okay. In the amount of $10,355.
I guess you don't talk.
Yeah.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve executive minutes for the meeting of August 4th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay.
Aye.
Today's financials include supplemental appropriations for the Sheriff's Concealed Handgun Fund and the 911 Program Fund, cash transfer out of the General Fund for the quarterly gas well proceeds for the Board of DD, contracts with the Department on Aging, Personal Care, and Homemaker Service Providers, travel requests for the Department of Emergency Services, we have payment number 10 to Lakeland Management Systems Incorporated, that's for the County Engineers' Office of Mission Building Project in the amount of $98,240. Payment to Lebanon Ford for the state contract purchase of four police interceptor vehicles for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $105,540. Payments to R&amp;D Heating for the replacement of five rooftop HVAC units for the Board of DD totaling $44,500, and a payment to Ruco Seal Coating and Having, that's for the asphalt grinding and paving of 470 Center Street Buildings, four or five and six parking lots for the Maintenance Department in the amount of $38,400.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
We conducted interviews and our recommendation is to hire Tina Gonzalez. She's newer to the area, but she has a history in customer service. She's worked for a few car dealerships, providing customer service to clients, and she's also operated multi-line phone systems. She'd be very, very well with our scenario interview, and I think she'll be an asset to our organization.
She lives in Newbury?
She relocated from Oklahoma to Newbury.
It's a shorter drive. I can't, it would be kind of tight.
It would be.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve hiring Tina Gonzalez, position of full-time Information and Referral Assistant, number 1017, to be effective August 17th, 2015, at a rate of $11.55 per hour. After the successful completion of a 180-day probationary period, the rate will increase to $12.16 per hour.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Okay. The next item on the list, as I'm continuing to review our job descriptions, we're getting close to the end. However, when I came across our Senior Transportation Coordinator's job description, it neglected to reflect that this individual actually has three full-time staff working underneath them. So they indeed are a supervisor. So they train, they supervise, and they schedule three full-time staff. And that was not reflected at all in her job description. So once we made the job description accurate, I did take a look at my org chart and compared it with other staff members who have direct reports. So for consistency's sake, those who are administrative staff or are managers, they are a grade 10. So I am proposing that we regrade the Transportation Coordinator to a grade 10, which reflects being a supervisor.
I thought.
Followed by...
You want to do a...
Followed by...
I was thinking about that. This one seemed unique compared to the ones that follow.
Yeah, we can do this one by itself, if you want.
Okay.
And then we'll review.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the regrade of the Senior Transportation Coordinator, number 1019, position from grade 8 to grade 10, and revised job description to better reflect the duties of the job, to be effective August 11th, 2015.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
And Joanna Brace, she currently is our Senior Transportation Coordinator, and there will be a slight change in her pay. I believe it's 15 cents an hour, just by putting her on the right grade and the appropriate step. So it's just making things whole.
15 cents going up.
Yeah.
You can see Heidi on the financial. And then on the next one?
Okay. The next one is we redid our maintenance position to have a maintenance coordinator. I worked with Glenn a bit, and I used his maintenance supervisor job description as a guide. And what we're looking for is a maintenance person who can really own our building and grounds, that can supervise a housekeeper, which is number...
The next one?
The next one, and can also coordinate with county maintenance for larger-scale projects. So the expectation is that we're not calling county maintenance to fix a light, the boilers, toilets, that this coordinator is able to do that on large-scale projects, a renovation, a major equipment failure, that he can coordinate with maintenance. So that is the plan.
Sounds good. Did I miss something? Did we skip one?
No. Number six, we should have done with five.
Yeah, five and six probably should have been together.
So we'll, we do number six, and then we can do...
Yeah.
The rest of them concurrently.
Yeah.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the regrade of Joanna Brace, Senior Transportation Coordinator, number 1019, from grade 8, Step 6, to grade 10, Step 2, at the rate of $18.49 per hour, to be effective August 16th, 2015.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
I think we're good with number seven, about the maintenance coordinator.
I think we are.
So on eight, a housekeeper is something we did put in our budget for 2016. However, I'm sure you know, we've had quite a few retirements in the last six months, three staff. And because of the retirements, it's kind of changed our labor costs. So we are actually able to move forward on a housekeeper at this point. So with our maintenance role shifting to a maintenance coordinator, there's really no housekeeping or janitorial duties in that job description. So we'd like to move forward with a housekeeper at this time, part-time, more in the evenings, to help take care of the center with all of the traffic. And that person would report to the maintenance coordinator. And then I did include an org chart showing the chain of command, and I'm asking that we can both advertise for both positions until filled. And that takes us to 11.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Any questions on any of it?
So we're doing seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Yes.
You've got a lot of reading.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the revised job title and description for the position of Maintenance Coordinator, number 1013, to be effective August 11th, 2015. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the title and job description for the new position of Housekeeper, number 1033, to be effective August 11th, 2015. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the revised organizational chart to include the position of Housekeeper and title change of Maintenance Coordinator, to be effective August 11th, 2015. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the revised organizational chart to include the position of Housekeeper and title change of Maintenance Coordinator, to be effective August 11th, 2015. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Full-Time Maintenance Coordinator, number 1013. This position will remain posted until filled. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Part-Time Housekeeper, number 1033-1. This position will remain posted until filled.
The wheel has just been reinvented. It's a really nice wheel.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
You took you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
When I was working with Jessica on the development of her new job descriptions, one of the things that I did, based on her request for the housekeeper position, she wanted to make it a grade 4. And so I did a little investigating to see what other positions we had that were also grade 4, to make sure it was in the right ballpark. And what I learned is that the other grade 4 positions are dog shelter attendant, maintenance helper, a cook in the aging kitchen, and my courier, who handles confidential material is required to interact with all the other departments, elected officials. It's a much more responsible and challenging job. He has to work with different office equipment and takes a brain, not a broom. So I talked to Dave. I looked at some of the grade 5 positions, and they were more like the information referral specialists and secretarial positions that are more comparable to what Matt does. And so I asked him if we could regrade Matt to grade 5, to reflect that his job requires a little bit more, it's more challenging, it's a harder job.
And there's discretion.
Yes, a lot of discretion. He deals with the public all the time down there, and again, there's a lot of confidential material that he handles, and has done a good job with it. And so I'm requesting that we regrade the Archives and Record Center Clerk position to a grade 5. And the step would take him up about 74 cents an hour. Because our salary increases came a little bit later this year, there is enough money to pay for it for the remainder of this year in my payroll fund. And then when we get to my budget hearing, then I would need to make an adjustment for next year. It costs about $1,500.
You're saying that it's about a 74 cent an hour increase from grade 4, Step 2...
To grade 5.
To grade 5, Step 1.
Correct.
But she's covering for this year. Right. I just get that straight.
Right. And because the other associated things like Medicare and PERS are done on a percentage basis, there's adequate money in all of those line items to cover the increased remainder of this year in my current budget.
The Archives and Record Center is requesting the Board approve the regrade of the Archives and Records Clerk, number 2607, position from grade 4 to grade 5, to be effective August 11th, 2015. The Archives and Record Center is requesting the Board approve the regrade of Matthew Murphy, Archives and Records Clerk, number 2607, from grade 4, Step 2, to grade 5, Step 1, at the rate of $12.16 per hour, to be effective August 16th, 2015.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm doing Karen, because Karen is out of town. She'll be back tomorrow, I believe, late. So these are personnel actions for her. First one is reassigning Lori Westerfield to be a full-time clerk, for a position as attendant. Ariel Lehman on to be hired as a part-time attendant. And we have to then advertise for a full-time attendant to replace Lori in that position. And then we have a couple other people that are stepping down because they're moving on to better career positions, Lorna Tenny, Katie Lanigan. And so therefore, we, at that point, based on these vacancies, we're asking that there be four positions. Right now, there's two positions being posted for. We're asking that to be increased to four. It's not an increase in staff, it's just to cover all these spokes that are heading on to improve your position.
You want to do all five together, 14 through 19?
The County Home is requesting the Board approve the reassignment of Lori Westerfeld from Full-Time Attendant, number 1504, to Full-Time Clerk, number 1503, to be effective September 1st, 2015, at her current rate of $9.39 per hour. After the successful completion of a 180-day probationary period, the rate will increase to $9.89 per hour. The County Home is requesting the Board approve hiring Ariel Lehman to the position of Part-Time Attendant, number 1504-1, to be effective September 2nd, 2015, at a rate of $9.39 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $9.89 per hour. The County Home is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Full-Time Attendant, number 1504, Third Shift. This position will remain posted until filled. The County Home is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Lorna Tenny, Part-Time Attendant, to be effective August 18th, 2015. The County Home is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Katie Lanigan, Part-Time Attendant, to be effective August 27th, 2015. The County Home is requesting the Board increase the current posting for Part-Time Attendant, number 1504-1, from four, from two to four positions. These positions will remain posted until filled.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
I'm also standing in for Matt Nito. Carla Jones is another one who's filed a step up in her career, so she's leaving us. So we're asking the Board to accept her resignation and then to advertise, replace her.
The Dog Warden is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Carla Jones, Part-Time Shelter Attendant, to be effective August 16th, 2015. The Dog Warden is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Part-Time Shelter Attendant, number 1607-1. This position will remain posted until filled.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye. Charlie, you're on. Morning, stranger. How you doing? Do you have a map? Yeah, do you have a map how to get here? It's a lot colder here. Exactly. I have on the agenda here today contracts with Bainbridge, Russell, and Chester for, they do, over the course of history for years, Russell, not Russell, Bainbridge and Chester plowed a couple of our roads that they already have trucks on, because they have subdivisions off them, so they're going down them. So it was more efficient for us to let them do it, because their trucks were already there. So it really only cost them a little bit of wear and tear on their trucks and a little bit of salt. So it's a benefit to them. They make a little bit of their money off it, and we can save some money by not having to send our truck all the way over there. The addition this year is actually, Russell was interested in doing the same thing. We're able, for the first time, to come up with an agreement with Russell Township to do the same thing. So it does really help us out and works out for them.
Save the taxpayers a little extra asset utilization.
Yeah.
You do that by the mile, or?
Yeah, we do that by the mile.
But I mean, I tried to figure out if...
Well, yeah. What we've done is, it's more or less, we refigured, the only real variable is fuel prices and salt prices. So with them being as variable as they have, then it's increased over the years some, but once again, it's not really costing any time or resources to them, because they're already there.
Fixed contract, so if there's a mild winter...
Either way, yes. And that's why we use a history, not just, we don't just change it from year to year necessarily. We look at a, you know, multi-year history and try to average it, because it's fair. They need to know what their budget is, we need to know what our budget is. And the reality is, there's no such thing as a tip full winter in Jug County. So we've done what's fair, and we've been able to negotiate the same price per mile for each of the three townships, all agreed to it. So we thought it was fair and good and equitable. So I think it's a good partnership. It's worked over the years with Russell and Bainbridge real well, and we expect it to be the same with Russell here.
And they're on the west end, west side.
Right, well, yeah. And that's, that helps us too, in that the traffic's heavier over there, so it takes our, takes longer for us to run our routes. And quite honestly, when residents see, you know, a few inches of snow on the road, a plow truck going down over the plow, oh, they're mad. They don't understand whose roads are what and so forth. So it even gives a nice perception to the people that they're out there, they're working. So it's, it's really worked out good over the years. Just asking the Commissioners to approve the contract for the three.
County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve the Snow and Ice Control Agreement among Jug County Board Commissioners, Jug County Engineer and Chester Township Board of Trustees for the winter season of 2015 through 2016. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the Snow and Ice Control Agreement among Jug County Board Commissioners, Jug County Engineer, and Bainbridge Township Board of Trustees for the winter season of 2015 through 2016. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the Snow and Ice Control Agreement among Jug County Board of Commissioners, Jug County Engineer, and Russell Township Board of Trustees for the winter season of 2015 through 2016.
Make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye. You get the turf up yet?
He says he will be there today. He said that yesterday.
That's the cover for the salt.
Yeah, the top, yeah.
They don't have any...
The wall looks nice.
The wall looks nice. And I have to say, your office is really nice, too.
Thanks.
I was over checking out the new building and everything, it's really fantastic.
Are you having it open, or? We weren't planning it, but if the Commissioners would like, you know, we're such, you know, disheveled, because we're supposed to move, you know, February, whatever, and with it getting done late, we're in the middle of construction season, so we just took everything we needed out here. So it's, well, you saw the boxes everywhere.
It's going to be very nice when it's all finished.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't need those drafting decks and desks up here.
We had, we had no use for them.
Our building department walked through there, and they salivated over them.
Oh, absolutely. They're nice for laying out full-size...
That's what Mike said.
We worked hard, well, Dave, you know, to try to go digital with everything we can. So we have very little, except for maybe subdivision plans, where we're receiving them from somebody else, that are full-size. And, yeah, we, so if anybody has use of that stuff, then by all means.
Building department, he and I walked through there, and he said, "This stuff's better than what we have." It's going to be real nice, and you're doing a nice job over there with the garage and all that stuff. Well, I've got Joe here. I had a meeting last night with Middlefield City and Middlefield Township to talk about the bugging lane situation. Joe and I met with ODOT, kind of came to an agreement, or tentative agreement, but I want to make sure that we, I'm under by this board, to help Middlefield, both Middlefield Township and Middlefield City, to work through this effort to improve safety for their Amish community. And so the outcome of that discussion that we had with ODOT and with Joe was that we would host a stakeholder meeting. This is kind of complicated, involves multiple constituencies. The state owns the roads, some of the roads, Joe owns some of the roads, the township owns some of the roads. So the thought being that if we can get all the stakeholders in a room, and figure out what it is we want to accomplish, set the priorities, and then figure out how best to go after the funding, because the funding's complicated, too. Some state level, some township level, some city level. And so we'd all get in a room and have it all discussed. The township meeting last night in Middlefield, we put some of it out there. In their minds, this is a little simpler than maybe what it is. And so we had a little bit of discussion around that. But I think everybody was in agreement. By the way, Quack was there yesterday in the meeting. They volunteered to do a safety study. We talked about taking safety dollars, which are available, we think available right now, we talked about doing that, to do a more of a strategic look at what's going on, because it's complex, it's a lot of this. And Joe has stepped up, because he doesn't own these roads, but because of his background and expertise, he's already helping Middlefield Township with making sure they get the services, road services they need and everything. But if we can get a, pay for, a consultant to come in and help us through the strategic planning part of this, it would help with the engineering part of it. So that's kind of where we're going. I'm making this board aware of it. If there's any issues, we can certainly talk about it, but in any, encouraging any and all involvement, because this will require all who are in the water and pull it in the right direction. John Eklund's on board with us 100 percent. Sarah Latret appears to be on board with this. So I think we got all the players, all the kittens in the box, if we can keep them in the box. But that's, it sounds like that's where we're going right now, and it looks positive. So, you know, these things, given all the players and the politics and all that kind of stuff, you never know what's all going to go. But I'm going to make an assumption that one of the first obstacles, you're going to have to increase the width of the easement, aren't you, that's going through?
In many cases, yeah.
And a lot of them, I mean, uh...
Yeah, and that's case by case, too. We were able to do it years ago out on Navu Road, with very little difficulty. Oftentimes, changes to the drainage structures, go from a ditch to maybe something underground, you can pave over it and not impact farther out in the right of way. But absolutely, whenever you're going to widen pavement or what have you, there's going to be some right-of-way issues.
And just...
And the discussion we had with the state, that's what tends to bind their hands up, because whenever the state goes after right-of-way, they're bound to federal regulations and this, that, and the other.
Some barrier walls and all the other nonsense that goes with it.
It takes forever. And that's where, for instance, my office stepped in on Route 87, where they put turn lanes up there in Newbury. The state wasn't going to put the turn lanes in. We got involved, they're like, "Well, it's too late anyhow, it takes us a couple years to get right-of-way," this, that, and the other. So I talked to Mark Pacish, I said, "How about if we get the right-of-way for you, before you do it?" And he said, "If you can pull it off, we'll get it. If you don't have it done by the time those plans are going out, no turn lanes."
The most complicated thing to...
And it worked, and it was good for everybody, absolutely.
The most complicated thing last night was trying to figure out where to put the digital signs for the Amish. You know, it's going to take you 15 minutes to get from here to Middlefield. You really can't picture exactly how we're going to work it out.
You're walking and trotting.
Yeah, you know, it was, it was complicated. No, but there are some, and Joe touched on, or actually Blake, when he opened up that conversation, kind of touched on some of the complexity here. There are perceptions involved that aren't necessarily reality. And so the perception is that along 608 north of Middlefield, that there's no right-of-way issue, because the state already owns enough right-of-way to do the widening. The ODOT guy was saying last night, "Well, not necessarily, because that right-of-way includes ditches, you've got to move the ditches in order to accommodate." So there's, there's things that have kind of come to the surface as we're working through this, to get everybody's perceptions in line with reality. And it was amazing to me, I learned a lot in this discussion we were having with ODOT and with Joe, at the, just the administrative cost. The cost to put the road in is one thing, but the cost to get there to put the road in is huge. And if there's any way that we can work together to lower that administrative cost, so through the county, through the township, and through the city, we can help cut through the paperwork. And that's where John Eklund and Sarah Latret probably help out a lot, and possibly in the lack of guys, is to cut through some of the paper japes. And so then we can, you know, get this done, get it done in a reasonable amount and in a timely fashion. So anyway, that's, I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, and encourage everybody to be involved, to the extent we can, I'll talk to you more about that, Dave, because we want to make sure that this board is full on board, and so on and so forth. So they're going to bring steel in this week?
Supposedly today.
Today?
Well, the only...
What are the odds, if I go there at 4:00, I'll see it?
The only reason I believe it is because we did an end around, and we know what company's galvanizing the trusses.
Okay.
And we know that they're completed, and there's a truck waiting for them as we speak.
I talked to Shane about this, I think on Friday.
Was he laughing when he said?
Well, he said a letter went out. I said, "Well, you know..."
So they're galvanizing the trusses, because I'm assuming that whole atmosphere there's going to be pretty salty. It is, it is.
Moist.
Now, these tent structures do breathe a lot better than any other ones.
Attacking the metal underneath there.
Yeah.
Wood on top of the walls, is that what I see from the...
It's not wood, it's a, a track, so...
Oh, a composite material?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I drove down Merritt, and I looked over, and I saw, "Here's concrete, and there's something on top of it."
Yeah, it's just, it's just a plate. When they, when they bring the tarp over the side, they need something to attach to. So they mount that, just for the edge.
Okay. The truss doesn't, the truss sits on the concrete?
On the concrete, and it's lagged into the concrete.
Yeah, I didn't go right in and look at it, I just saw that there was something different colored there, and I thought, "Oh, okay."
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Well, yeah, I don't know. We're told they're galvanized and on the road, so we'll see. I hope so. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Appreciate it.
Morning, Paul.
Morning. Not done until the paperwork is... Is that parking on the...
Do you have any, we, the engineering board hasn't even come to the board for approval.
Do we know what happened?
I want to think, we have a prosecutor's office?
One is working with the prosecutor's office.
I don't know why we're making a big deal of this. Throw another layer of asphalt on top of that, we're good to go.
It's tarantula.
It might feel right.
It's tarantula, but that's...
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, you see what's going on at Walmart? You see how they're doing that?
Mm-hmm.
They're fencing off large sections and grinding it up.
They changed ownership, you know. We had, in Board of Revision meeting yesterday, we had that as a subject. The new owners wanted a tax reduction, a huge tax reduction, yeah, which will translate to increased on taxes in this tax, taxing district. But it's the new owners, the barbell was sold off.
Oh.
And so it's no longer owned by the barbell.
Oh, good morning. I'm up here to bring before the board for acknowledgement, new hire appointments. We have followed the commissioners' hiring and recruitment procedures, and all five of these positions are replacement. Nikki Poppy is hired as a clerical specialist, too. She has an associate's degree from University of Northwestern Ohio. She previously worked for AmerisourceBergen as a patient assistance specialist for three years. Cheryl Mullitt, she'll be a social worker, too. She also, of course, is a replacement, and she has a bachelor's of arts in social work from University of Akron. She previously completed an internship at her agency, so we got to know her a little bit, which was great. She previously worked at New Horizons as a reintegration supervisor, and Chara Ministries in Thailand as a childcare coordinator. Jasmine Hayes, also a social service worker, too, bachelor of art in sociology and journalism from Miami University. She previously worked for Ohio Guidestone as a work readiness instructor, and previously was a community outreach coordinator at Miami University and completed an internship at the City Mission in Cleveland. Rebecca Johnson, actually used to work for us for about twelve years, is a social worker, too. She's coming back to us in a part-time capacity. She has a bachelor of art in sociology from Bowling Green State University, and she also has worked in the past at Wood County, Job and Family Services, so she comes to us with a lot of experience. And Joseph Tadadello, who started yesterday, bachelor of art in sociology from Cleveland State University. For the last five years, he's worked at Crossroads, providing intensive case management services to children and families. He previously worked for New Directions and for Cuyahoga County Children and Family Services. So he brought in quite a few people with very good experience.
Commissioner?
Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board acknowledge the following new hire appointments by the executive director of Job and Family Services as they have complied with Board of Commissioners recruitment and hiring procedures. Nikki Poppy, clerical specialist, two, replacement effective June twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. Cheryl Mullitt, social service worker, two, replacement effective June twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Jasmine Hayes, social worker, two, replacement effective July eighth, two thousand fifteen. Rebecca Johnson, part-time social service worker, two, replacement effective July twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. And Joseph Tadadello, social service worker, two, replacement effective August tenth, two thousand fifteen.
So move?
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here comes trouble.
Yeah, trouble.
Trouble's coming.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
All right, number twenty-six, we're, Transit Department's asking for permission to advertise for our public hearing for ODOT, for our operating capital grant proposals for the capital year two thousand sixteen. Gonna advertise for the public hearing to be held on September fifteenth, here at nine thirty a.m. As of now, we don't know if we have to have a public hearing, but we're gonna skip it with anybody.
Just in case.
Just in case, because they haven't given us the grant contract proposal yet. They're still working.
Do you give them a proposal, or do they give you the proposal?
They give you the proposal.
And the proposal is for your operating grant?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see that, let me get it.
Sure.
I wanna see the details.
Transit Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold a public hearing for the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT Rural Transportation Program, calendar year two thousand sixteen, operating and capital grant proposals to be held on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, at nine thirty a.m. Notice that this public hearing will be advertised on August thirteenth, two thousand fifteen on the county website.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Okay, number twenty-seven is, we're hiring a part-time driver, Jeff Jeanette, position of part-time driver. And usual, after completion of a thousand-hour probationary, his payroll creation was twelve sixty-four to thirteen thirty. He's a replacement person for one of the two people who left this property, who retired, or the guy who left from his job. And that's without me, you're asking for the last, I hope, last person.
It's never the last person.
Last person.
I guess, you know, we have a thousand-hour probationary period and you're hiring somebody part-time.
Takes him about a year.
I was gonna say, is that about a half, part-time, about half-time position? So with a two thousand, two thousand-hour work year, it's gonna take him, okay.
Takes him about a year.
The Transit Department is requesting the board approve hiring Jeff Jeanette to the position of part-time driver, number twenty-two, ten-dash-one, to be effective August seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, at a rate of twelve dollars sixty-four cents per hour. After the successful completion of a one-thousand-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to thirteen dollars thirty cents per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Oh, yeah, you're getting a good one, too.
Thanks, Jerry.
Good morning, Jerry.
You got the last four, so we're not finished.
Yeah. He's better be entertained, because frankly, our ratings are down here, so...
Give you extra hits, so...
That's right.
No pressure.
No pressure.
The, the first item here is for cleaning our water tower in Bainbridge Tower on Park Circle Drive in the Mills Industrial Park. The cleaning and painting of those towers hasn't happened in about, what, ten to fifteen years, depending on which tower, the next one's another tower.
Is this internal, where the diver goes in there?
No, this is the ex, this is the external.
External.
Yeah, cleaning of the actual tower. It's gotten, you know, the paint gets chalky after a while and all that, so they're just kind of cleaning it up. The Bainbridge Tower, the paint's still good, so all we have to do is clean that now.
Who owns those towers?
We, we do.
We actually have a diver going in the towers?
There's actually, at some points, we have to get, people have to go in, and we hire a company that specializes in dive, going scuba diving in towers to inspect the inside of the bowl.
Really?
With water.
You seen the new Mission Impossible? Oh, yeah, you'll see it, yeah. It brings up conscious of images of somebody jumping into the tank.
What do they, you just go in and scrub it? What's up? I mean, it's full of water.
Yeah, they're not actually, when they, when we hire them to go in, they're going in and inspecting it to make sure there's no, that the paint in there, it's not painted on the inside, but the seal on the inside's still good, there's no signs of any deterioration or anything like that, so... Because if it's deteriorated, then we have to drain the tower and actually do work inside the bowl of the tower. So far, we've been good on all those inspections. Haven't been any issues with the inside of the tower.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with H-2O Towers LLC to provide all labor and materials necessary to clean the water tower in Bainbridge Township located at one six eight two eight Park Circle Drive for a period of six months, and amount not to exceed five thousand five hundred dollars.
Hey, you wanna talk about it first?
Yeah, the next one is our Services Center Towers, you know, one you can see up of forty-four and Merritt Road there. This one actually needs to be cleaned and painted. It's not, we're not completely painting the whole thing, but there's areas that need to be touched up and repainted, so that we can avoid having it rusted out on us, and keep it good for another twenty to forty years.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with H-2O Towers LLC to provide all labor and materials necessary to clean and paint the Services Center Water Tower located at one two five one three Merritt Road, Charlotte, for a period of six months, and amount not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars.
Michael, what?
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
The next item here, excuse me, the next item here is for the Pettibone Road, the Truth for Life Church or facility there, associated with Parkside Church. This is the direct service agreement with the city of Cleveland. They will provide the water and services directly to the Truth for Life. They currently do it for Parkside Church.
This is where the VFW used to...
Right. When the, when the water line was put in for the Parkside Church, eight years ago, seven years ago, the VFW didn't want to have anything to do with the project. They didn't have the funds to be part of it.
They have their own well.
They had their own well, they had their own, they had their own sewer system at that point, but...
Doesn't the line run right across the property?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought from the planning.
They, but if they had, if they had agreed with Parkside Church at that point, then they would have been, at least my understanding of it was, they would have been on the hook for part of the cost to construct that line. Parkside Church just, just, is constructed, and the VFW didn't have the funding at that time to be part of the project, so they chose to not be part of it. Now, Parkside Church, or an entity of Parkside Church has purchased that property. It's the one, the building there, starting to build.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the memorandum of understanding between the city of Cleveland and Jog County, Cleveland contract number five four seven three two, in regards to the six extension of the service area to include parcel zero two three eight zero two zero zero seventy forty Pettibone Road in Bainbridge Township.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
The final item here is for water line easement in Canyon Lakes, where the water line comes from Country Lane down into Canyon Lakes. The water line was installed fifteen, twelve, fifteen years ago. Down through there, when the plat was platted back then, they did not platen easement over our water, over a portion of our water line in Canyon Lakes. I think the re, my best guess, I wasn't here at the time, but my best guess is the reason why it got missed was because the area where the easement is, is also, was also an open space area for the homeowners association. It hadn't been an issue for all these years, but the one property owner, Jason Property owner, too, that open space had a pool built, and part of the pool encroached on that open space. So when they were trying to work out the easements with the, between homeowners association and that property owner for that additional, it was realized by the homeowners association that the counter Canyon Lakes development, that the easement for the water line never got recorded in. So this is the record, this is actually to record that easement atop that open space.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the easement agreement between the Jog County Board of Commissioners and Canyon Lakes County Master Association Incorporated and Ohio Not-for-Profit, Not-for-Profits Corporation in regards to the installation and maintenance of water lines.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Thank you, Jerry, have a good day.
You, too.
That's the end of the agenda items. I'll get some upcoming meetings. I'll get out for a quick planning commission meeting. Oh, it's gonna cancel.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I said, I was tactful enough to say that at home this morning. Bring it here.
I was really looking forward to it, too.
We had a great BOR meeting yesterday. That was exciting.
That was a long one, I understand.
It was very long, yeah. It was actually very complicated, a number of Burger Kings transferring, which is very complicated, because the sale was based on cap rate, which, I don't know how many people understand cap rate, it was very interesting, actually. So we had some NOAC meetings coming up this Friday, Finance, Governance, and Executive Council, or meetings, the Family First Council on the seventeenth at two o'clock, and then there's going to be a regular session on the eighteenth, Board of Revision meeting on the twenty-fourth, oh, good, on the twenty-fifth, there's gonna be another commissioner session, twenty-seventh, another commissioner session, oh, this is gonna be a regular session at the DES. We're gonna have a regular session on the first, and a regular session on the third at the county fair, which is gonna be cool, I'll get my donuts and coffee. And then the, on the third through the seventh, we got the Great Geogga County Fair. Offices will be closed on the seventh.
Just to, just to let you know, veteran service commission members have asked for a meeting with the board to talk about facilities, and it looks like they're interested in coming Tuesday night meeting at the DES.
Okay, that's great. Did we talk about, or is it, that the eighth?
I brought that up for the option of whether you wanted to cancel session on Tuesday the eighth. Commissioner Claywell will be out of town, it's the day after the holiday, and we're having two meetings the previous week.
I, I just know that on, you know, Monday's the fair, which...
Tuesday morning is take-down.
I'll be there for a while, I think, let's see, the ninth. So I'm gonna go with I'll be there second through the eighth, a day before and a day after. Now, if we're gonna have a meeting, I'll come in the morning and then go to the fair, but...
Well, if you think the flow of business is such that it wouldn't be a competing business, that cancel...
And how are we doing on our meetings?
Well, you know...
How are we doing on the number of meetings?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I wanted to bring up something related to that. We just, there was a staff meeting last week, and the staff was communicating that some of the challenges that they have with one meeting a week. I don't expect us to solve that in this meeting, but I did wanna bring it up, because there are some challenges, just on the flow, just timing-wise, people trying to get stuff into the queue, and we're having one meeting a week and so on and so forth. And so with that said, I wanna bring that up, and maybe we can have some of the staff come in and talk to the board about that.
I agree completely with that. I, I, it was a noble experiment a while back, but then you will see that, as an example, on the evening meeting, there are not a whole lot of agenda items on the evening meeting, because the people have worked all day and then they come in, and so, so then the meeting, either preceding that evening meeting, or following that evening meeting, is one like today with thirty or forty items on the agenda. And the original concept was this would save staff time, but it doesn't.
The work is the work.
Yeah, I don't know if it saves time so much, I mean, I don't have any problem going through, personally, going through the thirty, thirty session items.
I don't mean you and I, I mean the people that are sitting here in the audience to, to bring number thirty-four on the agenda, and they've been here since God knows when, because they don't know what, what the pace of the meeting is gonna be. So the concept of it saving our staff more time on the job, I didn't see that happen here.
Yeah, I don't know all the ins and outs of details. I do know that it's, from a timing perspective, based on what I heard from the staff, there's just some issues of trying to get things onto the agenda, because we're requiring a week lead time, we've gotta review...
So you have time to look at it?
That's right, we've gotta be able to review it, we've gotta be able to consider it, we, sometimes we pull things off of the agenda because we're not prepared to discuss them in a meeting, and so there's some timing issues.
Well, they're waiting, they're waiting for a document from someone else, and the other person doesn't get Christie the document, and, and so it's like, well, now it can't be on Monday, because we, we didn't get the document in time, and we don't have a meeting on Thursday, so now we've got a week delay through no fault of people in the commissioners' office.
office.
I think that this discussion needs to be had with all three commissioners here, so...
I, I don't disagree, I just...
So let's, I'd like, I brought it up just because I think it's words of conversation, and making sure that we're doing the right thing by the county, and all the employees, and making sure that, you know, we're not creating problems with the schedule.
That's very much appreciated.
And so...
So do you want to then go ahead and make a motion to cancel Tuesday, the September 8th?
He's not even gonna be here, so I, I just wanna make sure that we have our, we're not...
You are, you are well within your...
Within the ORC.
Yes.
I, I would think that canceling the 8th might be...
I can call in. I'll be on the, the Riviera Coast.
Doesn't count.
There's no proxy, there's no, do you get it functioning? I just wanna make you feel bad, because I'm...
Thanks.
Where are you gonna be?
I'm gonna be in Italy, on the, on the coast, I don't, what is the name of that coast over
by Naples? Just the...
The Italian coast.
The Italian coast.
How you would know?
Yeah, how you would know?
So we have a motion to move to cancel session on Tuesday, September...
I'd move to cancel the session on, what is that, 9/8?
I won't be here, so, yeah, I second.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Before, before we adjourn, let me bring something up that happened at the Board of Revision meeting yesterday, and I think it's a signal, something to just file away for potential concern. There was a gentleman that came in who had put a Western Reserve Land Service easement on his property. And he donated the property. Now, there's a significant tax opportunity when you do a charitable donation to the Western Reserve Land Service, so he wasn't paid for that. But the downside impact to the county, there's two downside, dark side impacts. One is, he was coming, asking for a significant tax decrease on, because he's now devalued his property. And he recognized he devalued his property. He's got his own reasons for that, I'm not gonna second guess those. But that, if that became a flood of properties, that could definitely impact our income as a county. The second dark side to that is, that locks up property. Some people say it protects it, others might say it controls it. In other words, there is no private property rights. You've now given away a certain subset of the, what you deem to be the rights, constitutional rights, associated with that property. That changes the nature of Geogga County. And so I'm just putting that on the table for people to bake on, maybe do a little thinking about and that kind of stuff. This may be one of, more to come, which I think is concerning, so. So I'll just bring that up for informational purposes. Looked at.
Wait a minute, Jerry.
Hold on a second.
I've got two things. I just wanna make you aware, in case you didn't see this, that Senator Capri Caparo was giving a district check-in update with local officials on Tuesday, August 18th, at 10:00, over the Joga County Public Library Administrative Center on Ravenwood.